It's 5:30, so we'll call the meeting to order. Let's please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody, for coming this evening. We do have an amendment to make to the agenda. We will make it item I, which is KDOT agreement for... Which project was that?
The Peter Pan.
The Peter Pan project.
An amended agreement.
It's an amended agreement for the Peter Pan project. So we'll make that letter I. Other than that, Leonard, do you have anything?
No, I didn't have anything to add.
Okay. So I'd make a motion then that we amend the agenda by adding letter I?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. City licenses, you can see there, there's four of them. And appointments are next. The Downtown Art and Culture Advisory Board, we have two expired terms. And the due date for applications is on the website, is June 1st. And then the Park Board has one replacement opening, which is the same deadline as June 1st. And we had extended the Downtown Art and Culture Board. We still don't have any apps. So if you know of anybody that would be good to serve on that board, please let them know that they still have a few days to apply for that. Okay. Park Board, I think we're going to receive some apps from...
I got one.
Got one, okay. All right. Adoption of the consent agenda. Leonard, you in?
I'll make a motion that we adopt the consent agenda as published.
Okay, I'd second that. All those in favor signify by saying aye then. Aye. Presentations. We have presentations for the 2018 budget request. Budget starts for 2018 on January 1st. First is City on a Hill Substance Abuse Treatment Centers. Do we have representative from them? Uh-oh. Oh, okay. So there's nobody here from the City on a Hill?
They were advised when it was, this is when they... They actually were originally going to be on the Dune Eight and they asked to be moved to this meeting.
Okay. All right. Then we'll move on to Fort County Mental Health. I know they're represented.
Good evening, thanks for having me. I should have provided a handout for everyone that I'll be referencing.
Can you please identify yourself?
Sure, I sure will. My name is Steve Dene, I am Clinical Director at Fort County Mental Health Center. I oversee outpatient services, including mental health, counseling, addiction services, and crisis services, and serve on our executive leadership team. I appreciate the opportunity to visit with you guys tonight about my request for liquor tax funds in 2018. One of the things that I've been trying to do, as I went to other commissions, is just briefly address the nature of addiction and how it impacts our communities, and I will be discussing that just a little bit further. But as a reminder that when any substance is legalized that has addictive traits, there are going to be consequences. I mean, you see that, we've seen that with tobacco, we've seen that with other substances. For example, when gambling was legalized a few years ago in Kansas, funds were set aside to help individuals that might develop gambling disorders, because they knew when that was legalized, there would be increased access and also increased utilization of that. And the same is true with alcohol. I think the difference is that we've had these statutes in place for so long, we often forget about the nature of addiction and how it impacts our communities. So my purpose today is just to give you an overview of how we utilize those funds and what our services and programs look like in our community, particularly here in the Independence area. I've started the presentation with just a reference to the statute and a description of our organizational mission and purpose. You guys are familiar with Fort County. We've been here since 1964, dedicated to serving our community, and we've had a long-lasting relationship with the city of Independence and this community. I did want to provide some details about some of the population data we've seen just in 2017 and some other data we've encountered in the last couple of years. In 2017, you can see that the primary reason for admission, in terms of the admissions in 2017, is methamphetamine. That is the primary drug of choice for 48% of our missions. Alcohol is second at 29%, marijuana at 18%, opioids 5%. And there's a few other substances that we occasionally treat for other medications and other things that may come up. But as you can see, methamphetamine and alcohol are number one and number two. This is a bit concerning in that in most areas of the state, methamphetamine will be normally third on the list, but it's number one on the list in our area. And this is pretty true of our region and pretty indicative of the rest of our county. And this is obviously a drug with significant consequences, that has impacts on our families, communities, our legal system, and various other aspects of what we want to see happen. And nationwide, the trend towards amphetamine use is going down in our communities that is still pretty prevalent. We provide a lot of treatment for individuals that struggle with methamphetamine. We also provide a variety of services for other substances as well. In 2016, we provided services to 127 residents of Independence thus far in 2017, and this is at our Independence location, not just Independence residents, because we do serve a lot of individuals who come into our area from outlying communities. We also serve a number of individuals who maybe work in the community, but do not necessarily reside in the community. We've served 165 patients in our outpatient treatment program and 44 in our intensive outpatient program. And we certainly depend on liquor tax dollars to help offset the cost of those services. I have a listing of the services we provided, which includes assessment and referral, which is essential to being able to make a determination of what types of care an individual needs. Provided some information about our alcohol and drug general services, which includes individual, group therapy, family therapy, and our intensive outpatient program, which is designed to allow people to get a higher level of treatment without having to go to a residential place, and they could maintain employment or maintain their status in the community without having to be gone for 30 days. Not that that level of service is not needed there occasions, whenever we encounter individuals who need that level of service, but we like to offer that to our residents. We often offer public education and prevention as requested. And another important area that this fund is our crisis services. And our crisis department, which is primarily designed around mental health-related crisis, deals with a number of substance use-related crises, of varying situations that present risks to family members, to individuals, to members of the community that we respond to and provide services for. In terms of reimbursement, I did provide some information in terms of how our population sorts out. In 2016, that's the calendar year, we served 144 people at the Independence location who had no form of health insurance and had... Thus far in 2017, we have served 53. Now, we do have state funding to help offset the cost of the uninsured. That typically runs out two to three months prior to the end of our fiscal year. We ran out of those dollars as of the end of April in fiscal year 2017. So we've exhausted those funds, and we provide a number of other services that we don't receive direct reimbursement for. Coordination of care is so important for helping someone find the treatment they need at a facility they need, or finding a community resource, support group, community connection to help them achieve a positive outcome. In terms of our facility, we are a licensed facility. All of our providers are licensed individually. We use evidence-based practices that are based on data and research that have shown to have positive outcomes. We focus on functional outcomes with our... The people we treat gaining and maintaining employment, improving functioning and family relationships, including parenting, which is an important part of what we believe is essential to helping our clients, is if they have children, helping them recover so they can be more effective parents and keep their children in the community. We focus on community involvement and getting engaged in the community, and obviously we want to see people have reduced or even eliminated experience with the legal system. And one other important benefit that I'd always like to point out is that we very much do a lot of services here in the community that allow people who are employed to get their service and treatment in a local area and not have to travel distances to get assessments and referral and receive the care they need outside of our area. And I guess in conclusion, we would just continue to request that we receive the full allotment as we have and to continue our partnership. We believe very strongly in our program that is effective, and we're going to continue to strive to do better and be an important partner for the Independence community. I'll entertain any questions, if there are any.
Leonard?
Just probably, Mike, on the budget, where we've shown the $30,000 that's projected for the year, that's just a third of the money?
That's, yeah, that's what goes to that fund, yes. Special alcohol.
Okay.
It's third is what's received. Part of it goes to the general fund and that other part goes to special rigs.
Right.
Okay. So you're requesting for the full third that we generate?
Yes, that's what we've received in the past.
Okay.
Other questions?
Yeah.
What question I have is, I've read the health profiles and stuff for southeast Kansas, and that methamphetamine problem is really discouraging. Do you know why it continues to increase here, this part of the state?
Yeah, it's certainly prevalent in the southeast area of our state. I think there are probably a number of factors. I think our health in our communities don't rank well, I think that's a factor. Poverty is a factor. Access, there's a lot of rural areas where it's, you know, it's easier to make and generate and that sort of thing. I don't know that I could pinpoint it on one reason, but it's probably a combination of our geographic area combined with, you know, other economic factors and other things that maybe we don't, can't even measure yet.
We're reading a lot about the opioid epidemic. I guess you'd say not necessarily in rural America yet. Is that something that you think will head this way?
Well, my opinion, and this is, I don't have any data to support this, but my opinion is that there are a significant amount of individuals in our community that do not receive treatment for opioid addiction for several reasons. Number one is that a lot of times, you can be addicted to that medication, whether it's a pain pill or whatever, and you continue to receive the prescription for it. So a lot of the individuals we treat have some sort of legal instance or community instance where they're referred to us, so we may not get as many of those referrals. I think, secondly, is that a lot of the people who get treatment for that go outside of the area. A lot of the times, because opioid withdrawal is so awful, I mean, there are very physical symptoms, they may go to Wichita or Tulsa or some area like that where they can receive the medically assisted detox, which is, which can be important. And they also receive some other medications to supplement that. We don't offer that currently. It requires a special type of license, and this is a direction we haven't been able to go in, but we are certainly looking into it.
Okay. Then one final question is about funding. The funding, the $30,000 basically, or a third of it, whatever it is, it turns out to be... It seems like it's... It doesn't go very far when you're talking about the numbers that you have. Is there not Medicaid, there's not Medicaid funding for any of these folks, I'm assuming?
Well, like I said earlier, I think it's, I don't remember what the number was exactly, but a significant proportion of the people that come see us do not have any form of insurance. We do have, I would say approximately 20 to 30% of our population that does have Medicaid, but that only funds their care, it doesn't fund the rest of the population. We have a few folks that have commercial insurance and other payer sources as well. But the vast majority of the people we see do not have insurance in our alcohol and drug program.
Okay.
Is your program just on initial treatment, or do you have also a program to intervention to help them keep off of returning back to the habit? Or is it just basically Fort County's initial treatment program?
Yeah, I think that we focus on the front-end side of the treatment. One of the things that we strongly emphasize and encourage is participation in local support groups, whether that's AA, ANA, or Celebrate Recovery to assure they have resources. That's a part of our discharge planning, is to make sure they're connected to resources in the community that can help them sustain their recovery. A lot of individuals will come through our alcohol and drug services, but they may continue in other services that we offer, whether it be a case management service or continuing our medication program, just to assure that they have their other needs met to maintain their stability. I think what you're talking about, to some degree, may be aftercare or community integration, which is a very specialized type of care, but we just don't have the resources to provide. Some people will go to Wichita, where they have traditionally known as halfway houses for people to stay at and get additional levels of support. We don't have the capacities to support that at this time in this community.
So that's kind of a gap we treat, but we don't have funds to do the next step of support to avoid relapsing back in?
Right, not directly for that purpose. We depend a lot on community supports for that.
Yeah. Do you know what organizations we have here besides AA and...
AA, ANA, Celebrate Recovery. I don't have the list right in front of me, but those are the primary ones. We certainly partner with the homeless shelter here in town to address housing needs on a regular basis. And we do refer out on occasion to other providers to get a higher level of care if that's what they need.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. We're really just starting the budget process, and so we've got a long way to go, as Mike will tell you, especially with the new city manager coming aboard. So we appreciate your time, and it's in our consideration.
If you have additional questions, I'm happy to come back.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Items for commission action, next. I'm trying to write a tab here. All right. Consider recommendation from the Planning Commission to rezone attractive land from C3 Central Business District and R4 Medium Density Multi-Family Dwelling District to C2 Commercial Services District with a conditional use permit for a drive-in theater.
Well, drive-in restaurant.
Theater.
We can ask them to add that in.
We can have a drive-in theater. Restaurant. You know, that came out because I was reading about that drive-in theater over there at Joplin there. I think that'd be fun to go to.
The applicant is present, and I didn't know if you would like to hear from him first?
Is that Mr. Ports? Nice to see you, Mr. Ports.
Oh, it's been a while. I'm Jeff Ports. I and my wife Charlotte, we live over in Chinook, Kansas, and we own the Sonic Drive-In here in Independence along with Sean and Amy Bloomfield. Sean sends his regrets that he can't be here. He seems to think that going to the state high school baseball tournament trumps just about anything else of importance. And I usually haul one of the Sonic corporate guys around with me to some of these meetings. And he also is at a state baseball tournament, so apparently I'm the only one that doesn't have anybody that's a good baseball player.
Not to interrupt you, but I'll share some good news.
Yes.
Our kids won, five to three.
Wow.
So they play tomorrow, I think at 11:00 in the semis.
That's just one more day Sean won't be at work. That's all that means to me.
So you have to have a discussion with him. And then the softball team's getting ready to play, I think.
All right. So I've actually been involved in this Sonic for 30 years this month. Well, actually, I moved to Independence, I guess in April of 87, and actually ran the store over there, went down late at night and played cards with the guys at the fire station and all that stuff. And, yeah, that's back in the day. They... We obviously moved the store out west there. Just to kind of put that in a timeframe, I can't remember when it was, but it was when we were having the big news, was the big new 100,000 square foot Kmart was the big news at that time. Talk about Dylan's Grocery Store coming in. I think we had about 500 people working at, is it Matt Coors, is that what it'd be called right behind us?
It was Iverson at the time, I think.
I can't remember what it was called at that time, but it was a, obviously, a very, very... That big parking lot was full, three shifts a day. Obviously, we've still got Hackney over there and so on and so forth. Ever since then, every time I'd come to Independence and anybody'd figure out who I am, the first thing they'd start doing is, is, "Oh, my gosh, why did you take the Sonic out of downtown? We miss having the Sonic downtown." And even after 15 years or whatever it's been, I still get my chops busted pretty good because I took the Sonic out of downtown. So, anyway, we've... I've been on the lookout anyway for a long time for some space, and I've actually been working on this project for a few years. But we've got the opportunity to move the Sonic back downtown, to put it right smack in the corridor with the other fast food restaurants, you know, in that short corridor there coming from the north, you'd have Arby's and then hopefully Sonic, Taco Bell, McDonald's, and of course, Brahms, you know, just moved out there. So it just puts us right on that corridor. Great location with a big four-lane street, and it's just a 20 mile an hour speed limit there. And so, anyway, we've worked with the city staff for some time, met with the state. Obviously, there's curb cut approvals that you have to receive from the state, and feel like we've come up with a really nice plan to do that. Our projections are it'll increase our business by about 30% to move down there. And just quite frankly, you know, I feel like we're a little disconnected from the community now where we're at. You know, we're not close to the schools and the school activities. We're not there after the football game. You know, we're not close to the park or the zoo. We're certainly not on the way home from any baseball game or anything like that. And then, once again, the downtown, what's exciting to us is get back in the mix of the community and get right there on the end of the downtown. We'll be able to have an outdoor patio area. I know there's been talk of directly across the street or kitty corner across the street, and talk about doing some downtown improvements and having space for outdoor activities there. And so, anyway, we've been working on it really hard, and we're now at the point where we're going around to seek approvals and getting surveys done and going to be submitting drawings and all that for final approval. So anyhow, I'll be here if anybody's got any questions about it, or I can stay here at the microphone if anybody's got any questions about it.
The only concern I have is with KDOT, and I know for the curb cut and traffic flow, I'm sure you'll have to submit and they'll review and...
We've actually, in our original drawings that we submitted to KDOT, we actually... Oh, thank you. We actually had what you might consider the more traditional Sonic layout, which we haven't had in this town in some time, with an entrance driveway and an exit driveway. And we had several revisions go back and forth, and then we actually had a meeting out here at the regional headquarters with several of the KDOT people. The city staff had a couple of representatives from Sonic Corporate, had economic development...
Aaron Heckman.
Yeah, Aaron was there. We actually, we had had two rows of chairs around the table, we had so many people in the room. And this has not been approved or proved by the state, but this is verbally our belief, what they directed us to do, was to basically have a single wider driveway and center it between the street and the alley. And our... They had several different ideas, and our concern, and the way, I could go on and on about several aspects, but, you know, our concern is, we've got a four-lane commercial street with a 20 mile an hour speed limit in front of the store. We want to make it as easy as possible for people to go in and out using that street. We don't want to make that difficult, which would cause people to get off into residential areas or things like that. And so that's why they seemed like, I felt like, anyway, once again verbally, they were so willing to work with us on this, is because they agreed that it was very important that we keep that traffic on Chestnut Street.
Yeah. I could see some concerns that they would have with the turning traffic with the corridor access management plan, and then, you know, coming back out the alley onto Chestnut, having a blind spot, but KDOT will, they know traffic.
They've got a book, I understand, it's like this thick. I've never read it. They've... And one of the reasons that we want to provide that extra outlet there is, once again, that we want to make it very easy for people to get in and out off of Chestnut. And if we offer them two different ways to exit onto Chestnut, the local people, you know, if you're leaving there and you're wanting to go west, the local people are going to learn, "I'm going to pop out the alley exit, and I'm going to exit out the alley." And once again, the local people are going to figure out, "If I'm leaving there and I'm going east, then I'm going to, you know, do the little loop-de-loop there, and I'm going to go east." And we want, once again, we want to keep pushing those people out onto Chestnut where we've got the four lanes and the low speed limit. And quite frankly, it's underutilized, you know, shockingly, looking at the traffic count. There's less than 6,000 cars a day on that street, which is a very, very low number, which maybe doesn't make me look that smart, but anyway, but it certainly has tons of capacity to handle the extra traffic, so...
Yeah, I think it's kind of a modern magnet store, you know? You grab a hamburger and run downtown too.
I...
Pulling more traffic.
We're very excited about it. I mean, we truly are, and I don't exaggerate about the anecdotes about the people just have literally been on me for years to get back downtown, so we're very, very excited to try to do it.
You purchased the lot from Chestnut to, what is that, Locust?
Back there by the church, right?
Yeah.
And then to the north.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, can... What is the name of the other street, Kelly?
Locust.
Help me. Okay. So on Locust, at the north end of the property, on Locust, the, I guess it'd be the northwest corner there, that lot has an existing home on it. That's a rental house, and that will continue to be residential and be used for a rental house. And then on the corner, so it would be that very most northeast corner, there's not currently anything there. It will not be part of the Sonic development. I'm considering, you know, the big White House is going to have to be removed, it's going to have to be moved off of the property somewhere. I mean, I've considered just moving it, sliding it directly over onto that lot, and because, you know, I mean, my hope is we're either going to move it or somebody's going to take it and move it. You sure don't want to tear down a nice house, you know? How, well, you guys know about housing in small communities. So, anyway, but that area is not part of the Sonic development, so there's a nice buffer there on that side. And then the second part of that question is, yes, I do own that, and in the short term, I, you know, to medium term, I don't know when I would not own that. It's just, makes it pretty easy to be your own neighbor, so...
That was a question I was going to ask, is about that house then.
So we're just rezoning down to that, or are we doing...
Well, they requested the whole half block, but when it went to the zoning, the zoning commission wanted to exclude those two parcels on the north side and at least rezone the parts that they are actually going to be using. So they modified it from what it was originally requested.
Okay. That's where I was confused with the site plan with the diagram of parking and development.
Yeah, and I've got one here.
Yeah.
See, this shows, this shows actually what the Planning Commission approved.
And where it came from...
And, and where it came from, and I can't remember, we're in the process because we've dealt with the state and, and the city staff, uh, the former city manager, uh, the economic development. But at some point in the deal, when we were talking about the rezoning, and I can't remember who it was, they said, "Well, you know, if you own the whole thing, you should just apply for the whole thing." And so, so that's what we did. But I'm certainly on board with the, uh, zoning board's recommendation because I have no intention or desire, uh, to use those lots for anything but residential. If that's what they're zoned now, I think they...
Yeah, they're...
...find me to leave them that way, so...
They are.
Okay, that's good. So then, we're gonna approve the resolution, twenty...
Well, it would be a zoning ordinance and a resolution for a conditional use permit.
Okay.
And also in your packet, I had the, the staff report, and the planning commission took the staff report and they added to it. Um, they took the, the two lots off that we talked about.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and then they also added that the adjoining alley would be, uh, resurfaced and approved by the applicant as part of the project. Such resurfacing will need to meet specifications provided by the city, and such work will need to be approved by the zoning administrator. I had Sean Turner look at that alley, and he said, "A resurfacing, well, I mean, there's no base there." He said, "It's gonna have to be reconstructed when they do it, 'cause there's just nothing to adhere to it." They said it's pretty much gone.
Okay.
You want me to make a motion, or...
Yeah, uh...
And the motion would be to...
Yeah, that's what I was trying to do, it's fine.
...accept the, the planning commission's recommendation to rezone the property with the conditions that they, uh, recommended.
You got it right there.
Yeah, that's your...
You make the motion.
There's the resolution.
Yeah, I've got the resolution right here.
Okay.
So, uh...
Okay.
If you want to go ahead and make those motions, then I'm happy to second them.
I'll make a motion that we, uh, approve issuing ordinance number forty-two forty-four to rezone the described property from C-three to C-two commercial service district.
I'd second. Further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
You got that, Mike? Yeah.
Yeah, so, what about the...
Well, and then that, that's the next motion to do the...
It'll be a separate motion.
...resolution for the conditional use. And you might just say to rezone it to C-two, 'cause part of those, that, one other parcel may have been a residential zone, so just to make sure we cover it.
Do what?
To rezone them to C-two, but I think one of those parcels may already be residential. The four fifteen North Eighth, I believe, has a residential zone on it.
Yeah, well, can we just, uh, go by the property described in the...
Yeah, yeah, just saying, well, I think you said from C-three to, but, but one of those lots is, is not C-three, is all I was saying.
So, but this is the condition... This is the conditional use.
Recommended, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, this is the zoning ordinance.
Yeah, this, okay.
My motion would be that we, uh, adopt ordinance forty-two forty-four.
Well, he's no, he's doing the ordinance. He's correcting the motion.
Rezone the property as described.
Okay.
Second. Okay, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Now the conditional use. We need to prove it, correct?
Yes.
Resolution?
Then I make a motion that we adopt resolution number, uh, twenty seventeen dash zero thirty-six, conditional use permit for, uh, authorizing a drive-in restaurant at four oh one to four fifteen North Eighth.
With the conditions listed.
With the conditions as described in the resolution.
And I'd second that. If you want to build a drive-in theater there, you can.
You can add that as another condition.
We could add that as another conditional use if you so choose. Just kidding. All right, so it's been moved and seconded, then all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Good to see you, Jeff.
I'd like to thank everybody. Uh, I'm gonna stay for a little bit, but I've actually got to, uh, looking at the next item on your agenda, go to the wholesale water district meeting over in Fredonia pretty soon to work on our water plant. So, anyway, thank you very much, it's good to see everybody.
Thank you.
All right. Item F is consider RFPs for the water treatment plant improvements. Kelly?
Uh, Terry's gonna cover this item.
Okay.
Well, you received the, the, uh, information from PEC. They did a real nice, uh... I don't know how much of you have read, um...
I read it.
Have you read?
Yeah.
Word for word, I'm sure.
Yeah.
Every word?
No.
Is there anything you want to discuss?
Well, no, the only thing I, I question, you know, with, with our dollars, uh, that we have, we're really strapped for dollars in the way they described that security fence. Yeah, I, I don't want another ninety thousand dollar bathroom, and that's the way they're talking.
Yes, yeah.
Integrating it in with brick and stone, and I'm thinking, you know, if we need a security fence and get a fencing company to come in and, you know, we don't need to spend a lot of design money on the security fence, when we've got major issues, that we can put the money elsewhere in the plant.
The, the security fence and, uh, there were some things kinda added from what we had, had originally put out. The security fence was one of them, concerned on security. And the, uh, you know, we've had money in the budget to do break room for quite some time, and, and we kinda asked them to look at that and give us some ideas. We're, we're just looking more for ideas from them and getting an eye, you know, trying to get a cost associated with some of these things.
What about the showers? Are those...
We have no shower facility in that, and with, with them dealing with chemicals all day, we thought it would be, i- if we're gonna do some rearranging in there, if we could fit a shower in the restroom somehow, where they could, could share and change clothes or, uh, you know, to not take his stuff home with him.
Yeah, I could see that. Would, would it be, uh, a men and women's shower, or can you get by with a unisex bath and shower?
I don't, uh, I haven't checked into that. Um, I mean, presently, we only employ males out there, but I know, I don't know how that, uh, how that works. And that's a question for them. I, I would think we could do a unisex situation.
Yeah, I could see where you've got some problems with, without a break room, eating lunch in the lab and some areas that that's really a, a need that's...
It, it's a major health concern.
Right.
And safety issue.
Of the eight firms, how were they contacted? Did you send out a letter of request?
We only received one reply, that's a, that's a concern of mine.
Yeah, we sent out, we sent out by email, one of them we mailed, and then we, we contacted most of them and...
Talked, talked to them on the phone, several of them.
Plus we put it on the web.
And we only got one reply out of them. There was, uh, there was one I talked to that it was outside their, what they normally do, so they didn't want to do it. Black and Beach called, and we had quite a long conversation, but then they didn't submit, so don't, don't really know why.
Yeah, good work.
Well, didn't Trans Systems originally send some sort of proposal on this?
Yes, they, they did the original scope of work, and then they declined to submit an RFP, so...
Yeah. We grabbed some copies of this last night, just in case you didn't want to ask about it. We were anticipating you might, so, just your copies, in case you want it.
'Cause the range on this was three hundred and twenty thousand, if you just go by the proposal. And Leonard brought up some things that I'd seen that I wasn't sure about, was between three twenty and four fifty-four, if I did the math right.
Now, the scope did increase a little bit with the security fencing, the restrooms and the shower that wasn't, wasn't in what Trans Systems originally proposed, so just so you're aware of that.
I will also tell you, the, they, the condition of the, the basins, the settling basins, they're very concerned with what we're gonna find when they get in there. So, uh, but, you know, that's, that's one of those...
Concerned in terms of the...
Well, whether it will be actually cost-effective to try and repair them or if they will have to be totally rebuilt.
Yeah, I, I guess, I wouldn't be comfortable authorizing a contract for the number that they quoted. You know, I think, I think there's some things we need to...
It, it's a pretty big range, it really is.
Yeah.
Well, it's...
There, there's priorities that we, we definitely need and to act on, but, uh, you know, 'cause some of it's like broad is full-time inspection services. Well, if we're changing out panels and controls, I don't know if you need an engineer there watching that, but if you're cha, if you're working in the, the basins and doing concrete and construction for that, I could see a need for a full-time or more engineering services than, than just having somebody wire in a new panel, but...
I, I agree with you. So what are you suggesting, Leonard? Are you... 'Cause this, I found that Trans Systems was between... Make sure I'm reading this right.
I think it was around three hundred, if I remember right.
Yeah, maximum for engineering fees was three hundred. And I don't know what the hundred and twenty-five down, oh, construction.
Design-related services, one seventy-five. Construction-related services was one twenty-five for a total, not to exceed three hundred thousand.
And that didn't have the fence, like you were saying?
The rest, the...
The restrooms?
Well, the break room and shower were at it.
Yeah, I, I think since Trans Systems or none of the other engineering firms submitted, uh, if, and PEC did put time, take time to submit, I, I think we could modify or develop the scope of work a little closer and then look at actual fee structure for them. 'Cause, you know, there were some things that they covered in their proposal that they're speculating, like you said, are worse than what they thought. And, you know, we, I don't know if we want to do some, is there a way that they could investigate to determine the condition before...
Testing that they can do?
We, uh, when we, uh, we can drain the basins one at a time, and, uh, and they can get in and do a lot closer investigation and testing and see, uh, because they weren't able, they were full of water, of course.
Right.
I will say they were very thorough. There was six engineers showed up, spent a half a day at the point.
This is a real...
I mean, they went through it with a fine tooth comb, and, uh...
They did. I, I think what they showed us is, is as good as they could do with the conditions there. And they did spend time and made, I noticed they said they made some calls to your control companies, but, uh, where we have gaps of not knowing condition, do we need to, um, maybe at this time, look at authorizing to, uh, you know, just throw it out for discussion, that we select PEC and then let's define the scope to, uh, determine the full extent of the project. Then, uh, in that, you know, and I'm sure there would be a, a fee for doing some more investigation of those basins so we could, you know, sometime we're gonna have to know. And I hate to put a lot of money in parts of the project and then come back and say, "Oh, yeah, now this is bad, and now we get a bigger project." That we need to do priority on what we have to do to keep the plant operating.
I would hate to see us spend a million dollars on those basins and in five years, we have to reconstruct them. That, that's just crazy, so, um, I'm...
That's what I saw.
Could we get with them and, and, um...
Do you want to have like a work session with them?
I think, I think that would be...
Bring them in and sit down and have a...
And with Gary here, too?
Yeah. Yeah, 'cause I think there's, like you say, we, we don't want to go in and, and do patch and then find out it's worse. If we could know the full extent of the work up front, that a patch isn't gonna last, like you say, five years, six years, it's a gamble, that maybe we do it right.
Well, this, this PEC's a big group.
Oh.
So they got some real resources.
Yes, they do.
That ought to be able to...
Yes, they, well, they're all over the nation.
Yeah.
Ed, you have a pained look on you.
Regarding the basins, I think what they're actually considering is when we shut the basins down, they'd like to come in after we've cleaned them, possibly do core samples, do some x-rays, see how much metal's actually in there and check the integrity of the concrete to determine whether we need to either, or they can be replaced or...
Repaired or...
Repaired, or repaired or...
And that don't fully replace it.
'Cause, you know, it is a hundred and seven years old, part of this concrete, part of the brick with thin layer of concrete over it.
When would they have the opportunity to do that?
Excuse me?
When would they have the opportunity to do that? When would you be draining those?
We'll shut down, uh, probably about the last week of September, October, have that north basin down, and that'd be the, that's the main concern, is the north basin.
Yeah, 'cause I noticed in their report, they did do some x-ray, and there wasn't some reinforcing.
What, what they could do, yes.
What they could do, yeah.
Yeah, and there's...
And can, can we bump that up? I mean... You mean sooner?
Yeah, 'cause it sounds like a long time.
We could, but, uh, the reason we do it late fall is because the water uses is down.
Yeah.
Yeah. Makes sense.
And I know we're coming into summer right now.
Right, you know, we don't want to do it in the summertime.
September's not that...
We could...
Apart if we have a work session and get some direction lined down.
You want to have the work session before that, right?
Right.
And what I'd like to do is let them talk to us in terms of what would they do if they were gonna do this, so that we can get the best plan moving forward for the cost estimate that we'd need to consider moving forward, 'cause how you gonna fund it? 'Cause it's gonna cost a lot of money.
Well, couldn't they come back with kind of like an alternative? If they end up, the worst case, they have to replace them, then, then they have, will know what that is, potentially?
In construction, if you, see, we're gonna pay engineering to patch and repair, and then once they get in, it throws a schedule way off. If, there's a lot of controls and electrical work that's separate from the basins, correct?
Yes, yes.
So we could do two projects. One, to get the electrical and your controls taken care of. Then in September, do the tests to determine the extent, and then do a basin replacement or repair. So we're doing, whoops, excuse me, two projects instead of one. That way, you guys can quit praying about your electric panels failing.
It's an everyday project.
And that, that's good for you guys. Yeah, but, you know, we could at least get that pressure off, the panels are up. We got a generator if something happens, and then come back with the basins after we test in September.
I'll see how soon I can get them to come, and you guys might email me your availability.
Check with them and I...
Check with them and let us know.
Okay.
We get into budget season on...
Yeah.
All right.
Okay. Okay, so we good? You good with that?
Yes, very much so.
All right. Item G is consider authorizing receipt of RFPs for debt analysis. So what we're looking at on this, uh, just trying to get ahead of the game, Le...
So what we're looking at on this, just trying to get ahead of the game a little bit, we have the steering committee working up everything on City Hall as well as some other projects. And I think that it would be a good idea for us to bring somebody in to get a good handle on it. Now, I have a board over here and I'll kind of show you my thought on why I'm saying this. We can put together a lot of numbers, but when we look at structuring, potentially some new debt that, to address specifically City Hall, I, I think we're going to have to be kind of creative in how that debt is structured to fit in there and minimize the impact to add the lawnmowers to repay this. So I'll give you an example.
Can you all see this board around? He's going to move it around for you.
Jeff, can you shut that mic?
Use your coaching voice, talk real loud.
So currently, looking at the charts up here, in similar fashion, our debt is running out here pretty steady along for about the next six years, and that starts declining. And if we want to try to be in a situation adding additional debt, when we know that we got a six-year window here that we don't have a lot of room, but minimize how much we're going to add, let's just say this whole thing is the community's appetite to take on additional debt, so we have very little work with here. This is about six years, 2014, or 2024. So this right here is what we have to work with to fund this debt and minimize that impact. So through here, we need to try to figure out a way to stretch with that debt where we minimize the principal reductions and pay mostly interest. And then when we get back over here and a lot of this debt's retiring that's already existing, then we can pump it back up and be more aggressive with repayment on that. Because just looking at a fifteen, or a fifteen million dollar project that you're going to go fund, if you're at three and a half percent on that, just to pay interest only annually, plus you're going to have to pay some level of, of principal, I'm not sure what that is, and I think that's where we're going to need guidance from somebody else to come in and say, what can we really do, what will the market accept? And also minimize what that risk exposure is back to the market with interest rate. You know, so I don't know if, if normally those types of bonds in the market are at three and a half percent, what happens over a five-year period if we're only repaying a hundred thousand dollars in principal? Does it push the, that rate up to five, six percent? So there's a cost there. So I, I think someone coming in and looking at this would, would be helpful to us so that we get it stretched right.
It's also important to keep that debt within a timeframe for the capital improvement part of the project, because within a 20-year period, there could be other repairs or additions or whatever that needs to be done or completed. And it'd be nice to just be able to roll that over once we get it established so that we have the continuation, which is what we don't have now, Leonard, being able to continue just funding that at a level to where we don't get so far behind infrastructure-wise. There's ways to make this work, and I, and I don't know that either. That's, we've got some folks in here that I think can do that for us. That's what the RFP...
Yeah. So as we're looking though at this, we, we know primarily, anything in that six-year window is going to have to be paid off ad valorem. Now, as we start getting out beyond that six-year and we start seeing some of that existing debt that we already have retire, that's going to free up some other resources that would minimize the impact there. And we can, you know, you got sales tax and other things.
And these, one of the things that they had, PEC had in their proposal was grants. They made a big deal out of being able to research grants that they may have access to that we don't...
Yeah.
Currently know about or even know how to begin to apply for. So, I can't find it. Yeah, it says funding and grant assistance. So I think this is a good idea. I think this is an excellent idea. At least gives us a roadmap and lets us know potentially what we can do, the restraints that we have.
And Kelly said she would strangle me if I didn't mention this. So she was, she was ready. One thing that we feel, we, we've talked with some people, but a lot of the financial advisors want to come in and they want to tie their services to the issuance of debt. And we don't want to do that because we don't, we want to have the flexibility of understanding what it is and also in a situation where they don't, they're not pushing us into something so their fee structure increases and they get paid more money.
Yeah, I think to start with, we need a schedule of all of our, our debts, how much, how long they are, how much we're paying each year.
Sure.
Just so we have, you know, we look at the, the reports and, and with the, the numbers and the codes, we don't know where we are. And we've got some tied to the special use sales tax, some tied to just general fund and, and different things. We need to get a list of where they are, how much, when they pay off, to see what we can do, because, you know, we're going against declining property value. We, we need to have all the information we have, and I, I agree, we need, we need somebody that works for us, not going to try and sell us something on the end. And, you know, I, I hear fifteen million and I'm staggering with what we've got now. We can't, you know, we can't look at that, but we got to know where we are and when we're going to be out, the plan. We've got to know the pieces and before we issue bonds, if we know where we plan to end up and how the money's going to be there, then that's fine, but just to kind of roll the dice and, and hope we're there, we can't do that now.
Well, I, I think that when we do this, that would obviously be part of this process. We're, we're going to be doing that one way or another.
Right.
But through this process, we're not only talking about new debt, but we can also take a look at what we have existing and see if we can do something with that and allow some additional...
To restructure it altogether.
Yeah, and get us some more flexibility. So, but I, you know, there's people that specialize in this and I, I think that, that we're going to miss the boat here if we don't utilize those services and get, get an expert in here on this.
Because didn't we refinance all the water?
For the school, the one for the school, refinanced down to like one point something, six, five, seven, five, really low.
It saved like a hundred or two hundred thousand?
Yeah.
Didn't it?
But it was, it was for the, it's just a pass-through.
Yeah, but if we could do that on some of our own...
Yeah, but I don't know if the interest rates are quite that low anymore.
There's a gap, what's it, one, one and a quarter, something like that, points?
I think that most of what we have are relatively low. Yeah, sure, the, the rates that are maybe available today are cheaper, but by the time you, you look at the cost associated with redoing that.
It's a maturity's too low, then it costs you more to refinance than it does just go ahead and pay it off, so.
So, I mean, but that, that would be part of the process.
You know, if we have that information, we'll know where, you know, it's, it's handy to have it in a spreadsheet or on a tab, a schedule, that you can see everything that's owed, when it pays off and what it's due.
Mm-hmm.
And it doesn't hurt to ask for RFPs, does it?
No. That's what, that's why we, go ahead, I think it's a good idea to do it. Develop a good scope that you are real comfortable with and put it out there and see what we get. There's several firms. I don't think, finding people to send it to and issues.
Okay.
Okay? Is that good?
Yeah.
Yep.
They give you enough direction so that you can... Okay. All right. I'm going to skip here.
It might be good to go ahead and do a motion, just so we're officially got it.
Oh, okay. Well, I would make a motion then that we authorize staff to seek RFPs for financial debt analysis. How would we...
That is, that the fee is not tied to a debt issuance, correct?
Well, let them see what it's, see what they come back with.
Yeah.
Because these people aren't...
Well, we're going to put that in the proposal.
I mean, you develop the RFP. You develop the RFP.
Okay.
And the one thing you got to remember is that they're not for loss. They're not there for free. Okay, so, so Mike, you got the motion?
Yeah.
I want to, could you read it back real quick?
Authorize staff to seek RFPs for financial analysis of debt service.
Financial, yeah, okay, there you go.
I'll second.
Okay. All those in favor then signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, that's another good one to accomplish for, for this evening. All right, now reports.
Well, you got the extra item.
Oh, yeah, that's, I knew it was going to be.
It's a repeat from last time.
Item aye. Okay.
And Mike can go over what the modification was.
So we had an issue earlier this week. We signed this at the last meeting and it was, it was for the contract with DOT at the Peter Pan intersection. They sent me a thing that I had to sign off on and send to them by June 5th, so they can start their process on the project. And I questioned the number that they had in there as it related back to the contract that we signed. So I sent it back to them and they came back and said, we're glad you did that. Yes, that was wrong, but we found out in our contract that our matching portion was supposed to go up to seven hundred thousand, but what we sent you was only for six hundred and fifty thousand. So they've redone the contract just with that, so we got another fifty thousand.
Fifty thousand.
We, we vote you out of that one, don't we?
Yeah, that's good.
So, but we needed, we had to add this tonight.
Are you sure there's no other errors in there?
Well...
We didn't make this.
Yeah.
But, you know, they want to make some more in that direction.
Right. So we, we had a rush on this because the deadline was June 5th and we don't have another, another commission meeting until June 8th, so we need to go ahead and bring that to you tonight if it's signed.
Did you email that to us or can?
I, I did not, but I have copies here that will need to be signed, but I have two of them and you can both just read those.
Can you just email tomorrow?
Absolutely, I can. If you want to look through it real quick now, I can give it to you, though.
Yeah.
Okay. Yes, section, article two, page, or, yes, article two, section four.
What was the total cost there, Mike? One point four? That, we had about seven hundred in it, didn't we?
I, I don't have that. I'd have to get back to you on that.
Is that what you're...
Because there's, there's portions of this that...
Is that what you're...
I was thinking the city share was around seven.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
It may not even be quite that high. I, I'm wanting to say it was a little bit less.
Some things that the state doesn't pay for, the city has to pay all of.
Yeah, some of the engineering, I think.
Engineering, sometimes right-of-way acquisition things.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So I, so the motion would be to approve the KDOT agreement for the Peter Pan intersection.
Or you could say...
For the additional, you could say authorizing the mayor to sign the amended contract with KDOT for the Peter Pan intersection.
For the additional fifty thousand dollars for the Peter Pan.
Well, it's a different percentage, too.
No, no, the percentage is same.
Oh, I thought the other one was eighty-twenty.
Well, it was eighty-twenty on what they sent me on a different deal.
Oh.
Okay. So you got the motion, Mike?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll second the motion.
And that, read that real quick, Mike, just...
Authorize mayor to sign amended contract with additional fifty thousand dollars with KDOT for Peter Pan intersection project.
Okay. That's, that, that covers it, I think. I, that's my motion. You second it?
I second.
All right, all those, the mayor makes the motion, so he can sign it, anything like that. So all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We need that copy to get back.
You second.
Sign that. These are official, official documents.
Yeah, they got a paper clip.
There you go.
Don't get them out of order. Right, Mike?
Right.
Now reports.
Other than minutes, I just want to remind you of the health fair on June 6th at 7:00 AM here.
Can't do it this year. The library minutes are in there, the health fair. All right. There are no, our commission comments is next, Leonard?
No.
Anything for this evening either? Public concerns, we didn't receive any, so we're good there. I don't think we needed any executive sessions, do we, Jeff? No? Okay?
You want to announce, you want to announce when Greg, Craig is coming?
Yeah. Craig, our new city manager, Craig Whitehead, was in town yesterday, Tuesday and Wednesday, did some house hunting, believe he found a place to live. His official start day will be Thursday, June 8th, which is our next commission meeting. So you'll keep him right in on there and he can baptism under fire, right off, right off the bat. So, and we'll be glad to get him on, on board. Other than that, I think we're ready to adjourn.
I'll make the motion when we adjourn.
I'd second that. And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And we get up, oh, we got to sign our papers and then go home.
That's right.
I'm going to, because I'm going to be commissioner, I just want to get to the legal side.
Thank you.
So we'll have to...